Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for September 4th, 2018. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received was proposed to us amended?
Some.
Second.
Moving to second any discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The motion carried. Public comments. Anybody from the public like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda? Seeing none, moving on to years of service. Mr. Veder.
We have a number of service awards today. The first one, for 30 years of service, Christine Rathbone from the Treasurer's Office. Okay. So Rita will come and get it.
Thank you.
And she'll go back to her seat and come back later. And another 30-year certificate is for Debbie Bunger. There she is. Congratulations. 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 Now, moving up to the 35-year awards. Michael Reagan from Country View. We'll get that sent out to him. And another 35-year award is Rita Schmidt. I told you we're coming back. Well, it's nice to be a surprise.
You're welcome. Don's grateful, too.
Want to thank those four for their years of service along with everyone else in the county employees. Next is claims and payments, resolution to approve expenditures for the county.
County's expenditures this week total 674,091.16. That includes the payment on the motor grader in the engineer's office for 285,000. Another 62,000 approximate for the courthouse ceiling project.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution to approve the expenditures for Country View Care Facility.
Country View's expenditures that we will be paying this week total 44,055.36. We're still going to hold off on July benefits and payments to the county of about 298,000. Their approximate balance this morning is about 378,000 in their checking account. And that was after payroll came out Friday, so.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moving to second any discussion. This is a resolution, please answer your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. I have a few things I'd like to discuss with you this morning. But first and foremost, of course, is the weather. I'd like to start there. We currently have approximately 14 gravel roads closed just due to water being over the road. Various parts of the county, we do have some scouring on the gravel road system. At this time, there are no paved roads closed. So Dunkerton and Cedar Wapsi, near the Wapsi-Pinnacan River, the water is very close. It's right within two feet of going over the road. So it's hard to say with more rain tonight what could happen. Our motor graders will be out today. When the water recedes, we are, we're kind of waiting to see what the end of the week brings. If the water recedes today or tomorrow, we'll probably just put a barricade up if there's a scour hole or rock needed. If it's not too bad, we're just going to put some barricades up and then come back later in the week just due to, we anticipate more rain coming. We don't want to place new rock today or tomorrow and then have it washed off later in the week. So the public will probably see several mini barricades on the gravel road system, principally in the north and the northeast portion of the county for this week. And we are working our best to get those reopened and back to normal. We are out taking pictures this morning and documenting, beginning the process of documentation of these areas in case there's a FEMA declaration. Can I answer any questions about the road system?
I got an email from you yesterday about sand being taken out to, I've never seen any sand out there.
Okay, so at the Moose Lodge on Washburn,
Right.
in Washburn on the Port Road, we have in the past, we've taken sand out there so that they can make their own sandbags. We had talked, my Maintenance Superintendent, and I had talked about doing that yesterday. There was some talk about us not being able to contact them directly yesterday. They do have a phone number out there at the Moose Lodge, but I wasn't able to contact anyone. So I think we were waiting to actually get permission before we went on their property and dumped the sand. But we
I drove around out there. I don't see any need for any sand out there.
Okay.
It, me and Mr. Little were talking this morning, years past, that whole area would be underwater now with all the rain we've had. And I only seen two spots with any standing water better than a lot of areas in Waterloo.
Yeah, that's why we were planning on doing it just to, it's a pretty low cost. Sand is relatively inexpensive. And we thought we'd take some out there just in case we get more rain later this fall. So we'll check with the Moose Lodge officials today or tomorrow.
Thank you, Kathy.
I think the Iowa Flood Center had crest projected at about 5 o'clock tomorrow, 5:00 PM tomorrow.
For the Cedar River?
For the Cedar.
That's it, there's no more rain.
And then I wanted to move on and talk about two reclassifications. Chuck, if you could please turn on the overhead screens. Last fall, landowner Lee Bader came to the board meeting on October 31st of last year and asked to have McStay Road, something done about McStay Road. And this is the portion of McStay, which is just north of Highway 20. So a number of years ago, it was a through road until Highway 20 was constructed. And then it became a road that was cut off just due to no access being provided from Highway 20. So there are four landowners in this area, so it's between Young Road and Highway 20. Those four landowners are asking that we basically do something about not allowing public to access that portion of the road. There's garbage, nails, ash, debris that has been dumped at the end of that road. You can see that no one lives on the road. So there's no one really out there on a day-to-day basis watching it or calling the sheriff. Last October, Mr. Bader came to the board. He has since contacted me. And I have discussed this with staff, and we feel that we're not opposed to to doing something about the situation. We ourselves have hauled garbage out of that road, from the end of the road. And, you know, it is work for us to keep it cleaned up at times. The landowners would like us to pursue a gate option, and that would be a gate in this vicinity at Young Road and McStay. So with your permission, I would like to proceed with this course of action. And that would be, what that means is, we would notify the landowners in this area. The code of Iowa does not require us to do that. We are to notify people when there's a vacation. But I just don't feel that these landowners would support a vacation. They still want access to the properties, the land there. So if we proceed with putting a gate option, that would be area level C. We'll notify landowners. And I would propose that we set a hearing either next week or in the next couple of weeks. And then we would have a public hearing two weeks later.
Why would you put the gate up there, up on Young Road? Why wouldn't you take it down to the next road intersection?
Down here?
Yeah.
So that's not an intersection, that's a fence line.
Okay, so cars can't come in from down there on the side roads, then?
Correct. This is the only, this is the access to these four fields.
And they're saying they don't see it until it's too late, that there's junk down there?
Right. They say that individuals are driving down in this lower portion, the southern portion of the road, to dump debris and garbage.
Who's paying for the gate?
I believe that we pay for the gate, the county, we pay for the gate, and then the landowners have to maintain the gate, is what the code says. In this case, the gate would most likely be two gates, probably 12 feet wide, so that they can get combines and tractors in and out of that road. And once, if this were to become gated, we would have no further maintenance on that road.
We'd have liability of the gate.
Yes. So there was, yes, we were, in the office, we discussed would we put a road closed sign on the gate? Or what, how could we?
I'd rather walk away from it and vacate it, rather even mess around with that. You know, it seems like they want everything, but they don't want you to vacate it. I just soon, if we're going to do anything at all, we vacate it and be done with it. I asked you the other day if this ever came before, and it has come before, because I remember discussing this before. You said, no, it didn't.
Maybe not for vote. Yeah, I don't think it's come to you as a formal vote. But Mr. Bader, yeah, was here last year.
And obviously, there wasn't any interest, or we would have done something last year.
Well, he just came in the public comments portion and brought the issue up.
And I think we talked about maybe not immediate. It was just something he wanted us to look at in the future, is what I think he was talking about.
Yes, he's contacted me several times this year for us to do something about it.
So what happens if we put that gate in, one of the four landowners uses it, goes down on their property that you say they need to access, leaves the gate open, and stuff gets thrown down there?
That's a good question.
I'm in favor of vacating it, too.
I'm not, I don't believe in the argument of trash and stuff. That happens all over rural areas. And that was the reasoning for the last time you brought it before the board for downgrading a road and so forth. And it happens all over. So it's not a reason, really. Like I said, I could support maybe vacating it, I don't know. But to put something up there and make it a liability to the county, I won't support it, but.
Kathy, if we vacated the road, what would take place at the Young Road intersection?
So if we vacate the road, we would place a barricade. So it would not open or close, obviously. It would be a permanent barrier at this location. These folks would have, obviously, these two landowners, they could have access. They probably already have a field driveway, maybe over here. They could access their fields. But it would be these two landowners who would have to get easements from the two in front of them. And they're going to say, well, why don't we just keep the road then? Because that's, we need a road to get to our field.
Are those, on each side of this road, are those roads there or are those fence lines?
Only fence lines.
So these are fence line
Yes, but they
Right here. That's a fence line, and then that's a fence line. Maybe I could show you a better photo of
Is that the road on the bottom there?
This is Highway 20.
Does that come into the road there or no?
No.
No.
Right. There's no access from McStay to Highway 20. There's a barricade down here in a wide ditch. I can show you a better photo of during the warmer months where the vegetation, it's green. It's easier to distinguish where the road is and
What's class right now, C road or B?
It's no, it's normal maintenance. And we're not doing any maintenance, which is another reason for reclassifying it of some sort. Because that brings up my next road, Croxton Road, which is also adjacent to Highway 20. We haven't maintained that for a few years either. And technically, we should probably, we should reclassify that and put up a level of B maintenance sign since we're not doing any maintenance. No one lives on this road as well. We haven't plowed it. We don't plow it in the winter. We're not blading it in the summer on a regular basis. And we haven't received any complaints that we're not out there maintaining it.
Any interest in vacating that one?
Again, I think that due to some of these water features and some of the property owners, I haven't talked to these people myself, but there may be some reluctance there to close this lower portion off if it's not all owned by one or two people. I can certainly look into that.
Would you check and see what the differential between the barricade cost and the gate?
Sure, yes.
On both of these?
Okay, I will do a bit, I will do some more homework next week and come back with the cost differences.
If we vacate that one, we'd have to barricade at both ends, then? Or?
We would move the barricade, I'm sorry.
Just one end, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the barricade's here. This road is south of Highway 20. We would move the barricade from here down to here at Indian Creek.
Any other questions?
Okay, one other thing I wanted to tell you about. We did some, in response to an ICAP presentation in Iowa Communities Assurance Pool there, who Blackhawk County, we have some of our liability assurance through them, insurance, excuse me, through them. They have recently been saying that they have seen an increase in motor vehicle accidents, rear-end collisions, for example, on county and city-owned equipment. So we, to be more proactive, we wanted to make our vehicles more visible. So we put some, had some decals applied to some of our vehicles. And we wrote about this in our safety letter, and I believe you got a copy of this. So I just wanted to make you aware of some of the things that we're doing to make ourselves safer when we're out and about driving around. Can I answer any other questions at this time?
Those have all been installed, Kathy? Or they've all been put on?
Yes, we wanted to do six vehicles right now. Probably another one yet this fall. And then next year, we'll look at budgeting some decals for the dump trucks.
What's it cost?
It's approximately $300 to $400 a vehicle, depending on how big the decals are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for August 28, 2018.
Sorry, Craig. Rita, Treasurer, just informing the public, the yellow sticker registrations that we issue our registrations for, for 2019, are critically low in the whole state of Iowa. The vendor that the DOT went through did not have the materials, enough materials to keep producing them. And we just found out about it a couple of weeks ago. So we've been contacting other counties for surplus that they would have, but it's pretty much depleted. So we have signs up, and our individuals and our staff will be taking their payments and mailing it out at a later date. If they're delinquent, we will process them with the reserve that we do kind of have in stock. So just to let the public know that, it'll be next week, will be the first that they'll start shipping out. So we're looking at about four or five days possibly that we may be completely out. So something that is happening to all 99 counties, so it's just not us. But DOT is trying to do, correct it as fast as they can.
Rita, you're talking about the small stickers that goes on to identify the
The forms that we get are blank forms with that yellow sticker attached to it. So it's the yellow of the product that they need to make. That yellow sticker is what's not available for the vendor. They've been, they must have some now, but it takes them a while to gear up to get enough produced and get them shipped out. So we're going to have an emergency shipment sent out, from what I understand, at this point, next week. But again, like I said, we have one box reserved from another county that we're going to be taking a road trip to go get. So we're going to try our best, but just customer beware that this is not just happening to Blackhawk, and it's out of our control because DOT is working their best that they can with their vendor. And so hopefully, it gets rectified sooner than later.
I assume you've contacted law enforcement, so.
They're aware of it. We were told to issue the, on a plain sheet of paper and not have a sticker for those that are delinquent, especially we will do that for, I don't know, I may call Tony and Police Department and just see if there's anything. Because again, you're talking State Patrol, everybody. And to just give them a sheet of paper, that may not satisfy the customer either. So we're trying to work through the bugs as to what works best for all the county treasurers.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for August 28, 2018.
Second.
Moving to second any discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The motion carried, consent agenda by resolution?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is proclamations. This is a resolution proclaiming the first week of September, 2018 is Diabetes Awareness Week.
Wait, Bridget, if you want to come up and say something about Focus on Diabetes?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So diabetes is the fastest-growing chronic illness in the United States. And so within Blackhawk County, we have the highest percentage of diabetic patients. So, I mean, what that looks like is, when your A1C, which is a blood test to diagnose with diabetes, is 6.5, you are considered diabetic. In Blackhawk County, the average number is 10. So with that being a chronic problem in Blackhawk County, diabetes is yet still under-resourced and underfunded. So we organize an event called Cedar Valley Focus on Diabetes. And at that event, we partner with local doctors, we partner with some industry professionals to provide some of the latest research in diabetes treatment. And we also offer free screenings. You know, with healthcare being such a big issue of this generation, diabetes is the cause of running up those healthcare costs. We believe with Focus on Diabetes, that early detection is big in the prevention and treatment of diabetes. Diabetes also causes so many secondary illnesses that we know we continue to kind of run up those costs. So again, we offer a program that's free and open to the community. The screenings are free, the education is free. We all are kind of volunteering our times. The doctors that come out are volunteering their time as well to just bring education. You know, even with the cost of blood tests these days at your appointments, those tests are even free at this event. So we just want to do a good job at inviting you all, inviting the community out to try to better the health of our community.
Thank you.
Is this clinic sponsored by one of the hospitals or?
It is not. I am a registered nurse, so I've worked in healthcare for over 10 years. So this is kind of a project that I implemented myself. And we do, however, partner with, some of the physicians are from the local hospitals, from both Unity Point and Wheaton-Franiscan. The endocrinologists who are specialized in diabetes care management, they all, we kind of partner with them to provide this education.
I have another question, I guess, just in regard to, Chris, I know you have this in the resolution.
Yes.
I didn't know if this was information that you've taken from the Iowa Department of Public Health or if this was information provided by your organization.
It's by Focus on Diabetes.
I'm sorry?
It's provided by Focus on Diabetes.
Yes, and the information that we did pass on, we did the research with the Department of Human Services online, and we also looked at the CDC for the information that we obtained.
So when we mentioned there that Blackhawk County has the highest percentage of diabetic patients, is that for a particular year or?
The last census report I looked at, it was the 2020 census report. So when we look at that number, you know, diabetes is very high in the African-American community. And this area has a large concentration of African-American people that are even the elderly community as well. And so that's what brings us to a higher number.
Are you working with the Blackhawk County Health Department?
I have reached out to them before. This program, we are very underfunded. We really don't have any funding. And I did reach out to them. However, they were not able to even help us with the funding of this program. So they are not participating with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, would you entertain, as far as, this is an excellent thing to bring awareness to from the diabetes awareness and the recognition of what you're doing, the clinic that you're sponsoring. But I guess I'm just a little, I guess, a little cautious of the fact that the stats that we're putting into the resolution, maybe as far as documentation, and that they're from the Department of Public Health. And if we'd remove the statistics part of it and just have the, maybe the first and the last part, whereas the diabetes is an ongoing public health crisis, and prevention and early detection are the best tools to combating it, and then the remainder of it?
Yeah, I mean, I think we probably have accurate information, but I'm happy to do that.
I just meant, because I'm not sure for what year. And since we're saying that Blackhawk County has got the highest population of percentage of diabetic patients, I guess, just to make certain when we do that. So if you would, thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I can read this as amended. Whereas diabetes is ongoing public health crisis, and whereas prevention and early detection are the best tools to combating this epidemic, now therefore it be resolved that we, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, to hereby declare this first week of September 2018 to be Diabetes Awareness Week. The Board of Supervisors encourages all residents of Blackhawk County to attend Focus on Diabetes, which includes free diabetes screenings, tutorials, and ways to both prevent and manage diabetes. Focus on Diabetes is taking place on Saturday, September 8th, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Waterloo Center for the Arts.
Thank you.
Second.
Moving to second, any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. We'll get that signed and get it to you. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation for the Living Roadway Trust Fund, grant for the county to purchase a compact dewdrop seed drill in the amount of $6,000 with a county match of $1,500, total cost $7,500, to be used for roadside vegetation manager, be approved and directed to charity, signed for sale. As recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
Some.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
Yes, so this, again, we did budget for this in our FY 19 budget. We applied for a grant through the IRVM programs, the Iowa DOT, earlier this year. And we were lucky to receive it. In our budget, we said, request last fall, we said if we didn't receive the grant, we would not purchase this. What this machine does is it is able to, it's a smaller seed drill. And a seed drill can drills the grass seed or the flowering seeds into, seeds them better than it would, than us just hand throwing out the seeds. So this will work well in our, in the bottom of ditches where we can't get our larger cedar into the bottom of the ditch. And we can use the all-terrain vehicle, which we received last year through this grant program. We'll hook it on we received last year through this grant program. We'll hook it on to the ATV, and then we'll be able to do the seeding in the bottom of our ditches in some harder to get to areas. So I'd like to request that we be allowed to, to pursue this, the grant with IRVM and proceed with this.
So we currently got a larger drill?
Yes, we have a, a much larger drill that we would do, for example, when we reconstructed Canfield Road, south of Dubuque Road, where there's a much wider, several acres of grass planting, seeding, that's where we would bring that machine out.
All right. So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
Move in. Move in second.
Yes.
Moved in second. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This resolution at the service agreement between Black Hawk County and Marco Inc. reported for the second, third years following the telephone not buried project in the amount of $28,600 be approved and direct to chair to sign for same. It was recommended by Rory Gaving, Maintenance Superintendent.
Some move.
Second.
Good morning, Board. Rory Gaving, Maintenance Superintendent.
Morning.
Morning.
This request was actually a part of a request for proposal that we most, we just recently put out for the IP phone system. This is for the second and third year. Now with the bids that we, or the bid that we did receive for the phone system, that did come with a one-year service agreement. So again, this would be for the second and third years. The reason we asked for them to provide this pricing is for us to be able to have the option to lock in on the cost for those service agreements. Historically, although not so much for us, because looking back at our rates, our rates have stayed pretty consistent for service agreements with regards to the phone system. But looking at futures, they indicated that you could possibly see a 5% to a 7% increase each year on service agreements with regards to the IP phone system. So again, that was the rationale behind us asking for this cost upfront in the request for proposal that we recently sent out. So what we're asking for the board today is to essentially agree to the second and third year cost. Those costs would not be paid for though until that second and third year was due. This is essentially locking in on that price. Historically, looking at service agreements for phone systems, you know, our, I guess our experience is obviously with our older system on the service agreements. Historically, we've, we've utilized those agreements, I would say, pretty heavily. Moving forward, one would think that with a new phone system, that you shouldn't have to have that many callouts, that many repair requests, or, or service help, what have you. But we are entering into a different realm with regard to phone system. You know, we're looking at Internet protocol, you know, the IP system. So we're not sure what to expect, what types of issues might arise. I will tell you, without a service agreement, the rates from this particular company is about $195 an hour, if we were to reach out for their help. Along with the fact that without a service agreement, there's no guarantee on the timeliness of them addressing a particular problem, so.
You have a current agreement with the current system?
We do.
What is it?
Cost-wise?
Yep.
$22,485.
Per year?
That will expire June 30th of 2019, and then the one-year agreement for, for the next year will, will take into effect. So that's already under this bid that we received. So again, this would be for the second and third year beyond that.
But the $22,000 is for what period of time?
Right now, we're halfway into that, that particular agreement. That will expire on June 30th.
Is it a three-year agreement, or?
Uh, no, sorry. That, those are one-year agreements. We typically bring this up to the board on a yearly basis.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received from Tyler Technologies for tax administration software at the courthouse with a bid of $475,024 and be recommended by Kim Beeter, Information Technology Director.
Yeah. Yeah, Kim Beeter, IT Director. The, the group that worked on this RFP together, it was the Auditor's Office, the Assessor and the Treasurer. We received the proposals from two companies, Solutions and Tyler's proposal. We went through the section of technical requirements. Solutions got 93% of the items where they were able to provide initially. Solutions could only provide 83,000, or 83%, sorry. The two...
Solutions first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tyler, 93%?
Tyler was 93, Solutions was 83, I'm sorry. And part of the problem with Solutions is there were a number of items that were future, that we would need to pay additional amount for. And if we got all of the add-ons, it would be added another $275,000 to the bid. So if we compare those two numbers, really, the type, or Solutions, solution would be $776,490. So it's quite a bit of a increase. We did have a demonstration of the Tyler software. It went very well. You know, there's some things that the system does better than what we have right now, and there's a few items that, yes, our solution probably still has. But there are things that they're looking at, maybe incorporating into the application. The other positive thing that's come out of this is Lynn County has already made a commitment to go work with Tyler too, so that would add another large county. So Pol County is looking at it as well. So the three of us, as larger counties, may have some more influence on the enhancements that get incorporated into the software. So with that, we would like to propose that we go with the Tyler solution. Any questions that you have?
That cost that you have listed here, $475,000, does that include the upgrades that you requested?
Tyler led us to believe that those enhancements that came out of this would be incorporated in the system with our maintenance agreement.
So no additional cost?
No additional cost. There were a couple add-ons that we got as part of this, and a test data base is one, but it's included in that $475,000 amount. And then a web plugin. And the web plugin will let us incorporate the ability to link to the county website and to Vanguard Appraisals, and any other software that has a parcel-driven link. So that will be a nice feature that we don't have right now.
And Tyler bought out New World?
Tyler bought New World out, and that's another positive. New World Systems is who we have for our financial and payroll system. And there's an interface that needs to happen with the tax collection and a dispersment of funds to the different cities and county and school districts and that. So that's already been tested. Scott County has Tyler as well, and they also have New World Systems.
Thank you.
Were there any reservations on, on the decision?
No, I think that everybody was real positive about the demonstration. And like you said, you know, several large counties are going to be on board with this, and there are several, obviously, counties that are using it right now. So I think...
Implementation.
Well, and that's, yes. We have in our RFPs stated that we would like the system to be live February 14th of 2020. And we have been assured by the vendor that that's a doable goal. But obviously, when we have the contract this year, we will be very specific about our expectations of when it's going to be completed and what penalty there might be if there's a delay.
Is that in the contract?
We don't have the contract yet. This is really, this, this conversation was to get approval to go forward with the contract. Dana suggested that we word, wording that's included in here.
Any other questions?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is other business. Motion at the appointment of Amanda Fessenmeyer to the Black Hawk County Planning and Zoning Board be approved effective today, September 4th, 2018.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I think Amanda is here. Want to thank her for her willingness to be on the planning zoning board.
Thank you. And I just want to take a minute to thank the Board for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, next is motion, direct to county auditor, advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 on Tuesday, September 18th, in Boardroom 201, ordinance number 77-216, for a request submitted by BMC Aggregates, Cedar Wapsy Road to rezone 40 acres from Agricultural District to Agricultural Limited District to allow the expansion of existing quarter operation.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion, direct to county auditor, to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:07 on September 18th, in this Boardroom, on 77-217, for a request submitted by Dean Karen Branch, 9737, North Canfield Road, rezone 1.1 acres from Agricultural District to AR, to build one single-family home.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion, direct to county auditor, to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:09, September 18th, Boardroom 201, ordinance number 77-218, for a request submitted by Philip Shirk, 8902, Dyers Road to rezone 7.08 acres.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a motion, direct to county auditor, to advertise for a public hearing at 9:11 on Tuesday, September 18th, 2018, Boardroom 201, 77-219, for a request submitted by Black Hawk County, 1410, West Dunkerton Road, rezone 10.60 acres from Agricultural Limited to Agricultural District, RM, in regards to Country View Care Facility.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a resolution at the minor plat of survey submitted by Travis Enn to Minor Platt, 6.05 acres located at 8521 Kimball Avenue into two lots, parcel zoned AR Agricultural Residential into Agricultural District. The property in question is located at 8521 Kimball Avenue.
Good morning.
Okay, good morning. Okay, yeah, this is a request for 641. Oops, I get the wrong...
We're just doing the minor plat, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think I... Okay. Okay, yeah, this is a request to plot approximately 6.05 acres to allow for an existing home to be split from a 35-acre parcel. Was moved by Sage and seconded by Enchan to approve the minor plat request. Motion approved, carried unanimously, 4-0. The applicant's request to rezone 2.9 acres of the minor plat area from a agricultural district to our agricultural residential district was appealed by the Board of Supervisors on July 17, 2018, the 3.15 acres of the minor plat area is owned AR Agricultural District. Since the adoption of the Black Hawk County Planning Ordinance, the property and surrounding area identified as agricultural on the current and future land use map. The property in question is not located in a special flood hazard area. The lot meets provisions of the Agriculture Residential District by being greater than 1.5 acres in size, 150 feet wide. The applicant intends to provide an access easement to the purchaser of the farmland that is being split off to make sure they have future access to the northern portion of the site. The Technical Review Committee did have a concern regarding access. Brandon wanted to make sure the person that was, that purchases the farmland has an access easement to the northern side of the property as well. And that's the staff.
Some move.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution, the minor plat of survey submitted by Chris Tomy to the minor plat, 9.4 acres located at 641 South Raymond Road into two lots, 2.9 acres parcel zoned AR Agricultural Residential, and a 6.58 acres, acres parcel zoned Agricultural District. The property in question is 641 South Raymond Road, approximately one-quarter miles north of South Raymond Road and Osage Road intersection.
Okay, yeah, this is a request for 641, South Raymond Road, the Tomy Minor Platt. Request is to plot 9.48 acres in the two lots to allow for the construction of one new single-family home. It was moved by Sage and seconded by Enchan to approve the minor plat request. Motion to approve carried unanimously, 4-0. The, the immediate area consists of farmland with existing rural homes and Raymond Road and Osage Road. Surrounding area is owned Agricultural District and Agriculture Residential District to the north and west, and Agricultural District to the south. Applies identified as agricultural on the future land use map, a component of the Black Hawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Under the north and west, there's zone agricultural and residential line of the south and east are zone agricultural. More than part of the property in question has 10% of the land located in a special flood hazard area. However, the rezone area, 99% of the 2.9 acres is not located in the flood plain. The lot meets the provisions of the Agriculture Residential District by ingredient greater than 1.5 acres in size and 150 feet wide. The proposed minor plat area is not located within Black Hawk County. Airport land use and present, and height overlay review area, Technical Committee did have concerns regarding the request. Brandon noted that may have issues placed in a second driveway approach of Southern Raymond due to a large embankment on the site. That's the staff report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any of the access for the, the second property, that, where is that going to be located?
Um, let's see, it'll, you kind of have the, the existing kind of farmstead to the south, and then just north of that tree line area, that's where the, the rezone area is at for the, the minor plat. I mean, it's the, the access road is still...
Was there be a driveway there?
I mean, yes, they'll, they'll have to get a, another driveway. I think, yeah, Ryan just wanted it noted in the staff report.
Any further questions? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution, suspension of taxes due on, hold by, requested by Rebecca Cofferan, 2018, 19, in the amount of $1,270.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Resolution at the suspension requested by Mary Decker, taxes owed 1819, installments $836 pursuant to 427.8 of the Court of Iowa.
Some move. Second.
Rita, is this the same address as it has been every year, of Mary Decker?
Yes.
Moved in second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Any reports or information from the board?
Any motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.